Good evening. I'd like to call to order this Monday, July 10th, 2023, special session of the Carmel Claye School Board for roll call. Ms. Jackson and Ms. Williams are not with us, but we do have a quorum. If you'd please rise and join me with the pledge of allegiance. Right? We do not have any public comment tonight, so we will move into our consent items. Do I hear a motion to approve consent?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving consent, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three to zero. We will now move on to the action items for tonight. The adoption of the renewal of the referendum tax levy resolution, Dr. Beresford.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate you all showing up here for the special session this afternoon. The school corporation has been exploring the need to renew the referendum levy at its current maximum rate, so the same rate that we have right now, which is nineteen cents for every one hundred dollars of assessed valuation. And it was previously approved by the citizens and voters in 2017. So this resolution is the final school board action, making the required statutory findings and authorizing the administration to work with the state and county election board to place the renewal referendum question on the November 2023 ballot. And you had two attachments that were part of your information. And the first one is a new form to me. It's called the proposed revenue spending plan. And at the top of that form, it has a referendum question, which we will submit and then for approval for the ballot question. And it says, shall Carmel Claye schools continue to impose increased property taxes paid to the school corporation by homeowners and businesses for eight years immediately following the holding of the referendum for the purpose of retaining and attracting teachers, educational staff, and other support staff, and fund educationally related programs at the current maximum referendum rate of nineteen cents per one hundred dollars of assessed valuation? And that's a question. Just to put some clarification to that, educational staff would be your teachers, and also other support staff would include like IAs. It could be school social workers and guidance counselors, your principal, assistant principal. So it covers all the staff members involved and running the district. And then the last paragraph or last sentence of it is that the property tax increase requested in this referendum was originally approved by voters in 2017, and if extended, will increase the average property tax paid to the school corporation per year on residents within the school corporation by twenty-eight point three percent, and if extended, will increase the average property tax paid to the school corporation per year on a business property within the school corporation by twenty-eight point three percent. One of the most difficult things about this question is it's very difficult to understand what that means, because in a way, it sounds like you're going to have to pay more. And this is not an additional cost. This is the same rate that we've had for the last, you know, seven years. And so it's not a, or six years, so it's not an increase in that rate. It's the same rate. It will stay the same. As part of this, it's estimated for us that that would be a grand total of twenty-three million nine hundred and fifty-six thousand four hundred and sixty-four. And that's the amount that they're estimating that that will raise, that nineteen cents will raise. It also asks what the specific purposes for which the referendum levy will be used to fund a taxpayer investment plan. And so these are estimates again also. So we put twenty-three million five hundred for retaining and attracting teachers, educational staff, and other support staff, and then four hundred and fifty-six thousand four hundred and sixty-four for educationally related programs. But as a board, you need to know that this is all based on the 2023 certified referendum assessed valuation, and that the school corporation expects that that valuation would grow by about three percent a year. That again is an estimation. So it could go up, it could go down, and it could stay the same. Also, our numbers here that we placed are an estimate based on today's current law, current revenue amounts and sources, anticipated needs, which could and will change over time. In other words, we can't predict eight years from now, you know, what the setting will be. So the Board of School Trustees reserves the right to amend such a plan over time as other revenue needs may change. So you do have the flexibility to move more money to either one of those areas if need be over time. So you have some flexibility there. The other, Exhibit A, which is in your packet, was the actual referendum tax levy resolution. And I want to share that with you as well. And I think Colleen was going to try to put that up on the screen. For our two audience members, we thank you for being here. And so this is the renewal actual resolution. So whereas Indiana Code 20-46-1 has amended, and will be called the Act from this point forward, permits a public school corporation to adopt a resolution to place a referendum on the ballot if the governing body of the school corporation determines that the school corporation cannot, in a calendar year, carry out its public educational duty unless it imposes a referendum tax levy under the Act. And whereas pursuant to the Act, the voters of Carmel Claye Schools, the school corporation, approved a referendum tax levy in 2017 with a maximum rate of nineteen cents for seven years, the 2017 referendum. And whereas, the Board of School Trustees, the Board of the School Corporation being the governing body of the school corporation, has determined that based on current revenue calculations for the years 2024 through and including 2031, the school corporation will not be able to carry out its public educational duty unless it continues to annually impose referendum tax levy in accordance with the Act. And whereas pursuant to the Act, a copy of a proposed revenue spending plan was presented to the Board and attached to this resolution as Exhibit A-1, the revenue spending plan. That's the one I just read. And whereas, based on the foregoing, the Board now desires to adopt a resolution to place a referendum on the ballot under the Act in order to renew the existing 2017 referendum. Now therefore, be it resolved that this Board hereby determines that based on our current revenue calculations for the years 2024 through and including 2031, the school corporation will not be able to carry out its public educational duty unless it continues to annually impose a referendum tax levy of up to, but not to exceed, nineteen cents per hundred dollars of assessed valuation per year, starting in 2024 through and including 2031. And that the school corporation does not plan to distribute any revenue from the referendum levy deposited in its education fund to a charter school. Be it further resolved that there shall be placed on the ballot to be considered in a referendum of registered voters residing in the boundaries of the school corporation at an election to be held on November the 7th, 2023, the following question, and it's the same question that I just read to you on the other form. And be it further resolved that the superintendent of the school corporation, or the director of finance of the school corporation, or the secretary of the Board be and hereby is authorized to certify a copy of this resolution to the Department of Local Government Finance, the DLGF, in accordance with the Act. Be it further resolved that this revenue spending plan presented to this meeting is hereby adopted, and the Board agrees that such a plan may be amended and supplemented each year as part of the budget process or as required by the DLGF as permitted by law. Be it further resolved that any officer of the Board, the superintendent or the business officer be and hereby is authorized, empowered, and directed on behalf of the school corporation to take any and all action as such person deems necessary or desirable to effectuate the foregoing resolutions, including any revisions to the form of the public question in order to receive approval from the DLGF, including the financial information provided by the county auditor as required by the Act, and any such actions heretofore made or taken be and hereby are ratified and approved. So that is, and it's dated on the 10th of this day in July, 2023. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the adopt the renewal of the referendum tax levy resolution? Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Greg?
Go ahead.
I just wanted to reiterate for people who may watch this, that just one more time what you said, that just the numbers, the two numbers on the first kind of addendum you had showing what would be, what part of the referendum would go towards retaining and attracting teachers and other staff, and then the separate part of the money for educationally related programs, that that is not set in stone, that that can be, if need be, that that's kind of just an estimate.
Right. If you'd like, Mr. McMichael, would you talk a little bit about what educational programs are? Because that might be a question folks might have.
Yeah, so kind of in plain English, the twenty-three and a half million would be, we will charge teachers salary and benefits to equal that amount, or somewhere very close to it. Or and/or, it could also be instructional assistance. The focus there is, is this will very much directly be for what usually is referred to as in the classroom. The balance of the amount, the four hundred and some thousand dollars educational programs, we will use that to pay toward transfer tuition, because transfer tuition, the amount that we pay reflects salary and benefits, but we don't actually pay, they're not our employees, that we're not paying salary and benefits. So I see that as a educational program, but like a vocational program at Jever Light, for example.
So that would be educational programming where they might not be attending, you know, our classes, or they might be getting further training in a different program, and we would be paying them, contracting with them to do those services. Their employees would not be our employees, so we'd be using that money for them to participate. And the Pursuit Institute, of course, we've been talking about that a lot here in Hamlin County. There's going to be a lot of different opportunities come up over the next eight years, I can guarantee it.
Greg?
Yeah, one thing I think gets a little confusing from a layperson perspective, we talked about this earlier, that when we look at what the expenditures are, the nature of them under the operating referendum, they tend to look more like what that name would imply, more operational. And there's another fund that, the education fund, that is funded by the state, and from a dispersment, I would call it, an expenditure perspective, more of the classroom kind of costs come out of that budget when we see it, when we look at the actual expenditures on publicly available documents. But when we see the words here, it sounds like this is all classroom kinds of things. So it gets confusing to contrast the two things. Could you just explain a little bit more about what those two funds are and how they relate together?
I can. Starting with the education fund, in 2019, the education fund replaced what previously was the general fund. When that change occurred, the education fund's allowable use is much more narrow than the general fund, in that specifically that the education fund really is very much directed toward in the classroom expenses, so not custodians, for example. And so the first year, but we still receive the same money as we did for the general fund. So in round numbers, we're receiving a hundred and twenty million dollars from the state, starts out for the education fund. But the first year then, it was necessary for us to transfer about, fast forward to this year, 2023, we would have had to transfer about seventeen million dollars of what now would be operational fund expenses, such as custodians. And back, about eight million of that seventeen million, it's for custodians and other, you know, building-related oversight and so forth. And so that's exactly what we did the first year when that change occurred. Since then, however, we realized that because we happen to have a referendum fund, which continued to have a broader use, if we so chose, than now the new education fund. Instead of doing a transfer and everything that that implies in terms of bookkeeping, we moved the seventeen million, just moved the expense to the referendum fund, but also then did not, in other words, when we did the transfer, we transferred the expenses, but we also had seventeen million dollars of revenue to follow to pay for those expenses. And so rather than doing that complete transfer process, we moved those seventeen million dollars of operating expenses to the referendum fund, kept the seventeen million in the education fund. And so the result is, is it's a bookkeeping issue is the bottom line. And so, but it is confusing to anyone that would hearing our narrative and then looking, if you looked at our budget, I wish more people did, but they don't, you would have, absolutely you'd have that question. And I won't be there to explain it. So I'm glad you brought it up. And so that's what we did. And so when we're doing what we're doing, we keep a hundred and twenty million in the education fund. If we go back to the transfer process, which we will, and I'll explain that in a minute, then we would keep a hundred and twelve million, transfer the other seventeen, along with that seventeen million dollars worth of expense. So the end result is, is we end up in the same place in terms of supporting instruction, but it is a bookkeeping, and it is confusing. Now, in the three or four or five years that we have been doing that, I've not had the question asked until now, but I'm glad you raised the question. Going forward, one of the documents that you have about the revenue spending plan, that is new. We didn't have that when we first passed the referendum. In fact, we didn't have the education fund when we first passed the referendum. So this whole conversation didn't exist. Now, as was noted, things change in the future. And so now, we will go back to the transfer process as the end result. And the reason is, is because now we want to say what we did say, in that this money is spent directly in the classroom. And so it's not to be confusing, and being really unable to try to explain what I just did in two sentences, we'll go back to the transfer. And so we will, we always follow the rules and the law, but kind of the rules and so forth have changed here, which will cause us to make a change as well. And so that it has no impact, this whole conversation has no impact on the finances or on how much money is available. So it's what we referred to it earlier this afternoon, it's kind of a zero-sum game. And so this whole conversation is a bookkeeping matter. We do indeed, and our staff and students do indeed benefit from the entire twenty-five million, and it is not ultimately used for non-instructional kinds of needs.
So would it be accurate to say that what we're really saying is the state provides the majority of our funds are educational, but I think we're like the second lowest-funded district?
That's correct.
The state. So the state has realized that we're a rather affluent neighborhood or community, so that to make up for that underfunding, they expect us to go back to our local taxpayers and to throw more money in the kiddy so we can get up to more operational level?
The first part of what you said is absolutely correct, and that is, we are the second funded lowest per student in the state. In fairness, that's in part because we also have a low poverty rate. However, the state doesn't give us less money because we're affluent. There's a formula that's applied to all school districts in the state, and based on certain factors, one of which is poverty level, it impacts the amount of revenue. It's multiple-page formula, so I'm making this very simplified. We, however, believe that what we receive from the state is not sufficient to provide the educational program that we and our community expects us to provide. And so that's why we have asked years ago for additional supplemental funds from our taxpayers. And so that's kind of the whole picture. But the school board is making this request, and I believe it's fair to say that we do believe that it's an appropriate request to meet what we would like to provide and also what the community and the parents would expect.
Any other questions, Greg?
Yeah, yeah. I'm sorry about the questions.
No, not right.
It's a complicated funding process, and the verbiage can be pretty confusing to the layperson. I just try and make sure that it's clear to the public, and you've done a good job explaining that. So it's easier to look at it as there is one big fund of money that we've broken into two pieces, the education fund and the operations referendum. Those are the two buckets of money sources, ones from the state, and ones from the local community property taxes. But when we spend, it's kind of a whole different, it's a different perspective in that what we spend on the education fund area is more classroom-related costs. But the state has asked us to separate out more operational costs. We charge that in the operating referendum. So here's where it gets, I think, confusing when you look at the accounting records that are publicly available. You look at the operating referendum, and you see operating costs. You don't really see educational costs.
Well, you see about seventeen million of that total twenty-five million, as I described, as operational costs.
Right. So by far the bulk. So that's where it gets confusing, is that we're really asking for more money, overall money for kind of overhead, administrative kind of overhead costs that are necessary, plus classroom costs. It's even hard to explain.
I suggest the best way, I appreciate your questions, by the way, because I know you and the rest of the board, and certainly we do not want the community to misinform.
Right.
And so I appreciate the opportunity to state some of this publicly, so in the event that somebody came to the wrong conclusion. And if they just read our budget report, as you're referring to, I would absolutely understand why they would misunderstand, because they wouldn't benefit from, hopefully, the narrative that I just gave. However, I would say that as we now look forward to 2024 and the renewal of the referendum, we will very correctly and explicitly state, this is what this money will be used for, could be used for other things, but we chose that this is what we're using it for, and that is what we will use it for. And so, but you could absolutely, you would come to a different conclusion if you said, well, that doesn't seem like that's what you used it for in the past.
Yeah.
Lacking my explanation.
To me, the most glaring example would be when I look at the referendum spending plan, you know, it has just two simple categories, and they're both classroom-related.
Yep.
So as a voter, you look at it, you say, I'm providing more money to help the classroom. That's where I really want my money to go. But when you look at how we spend it, and we call it operating referendum, you can see as an example, eight million dollars of building maintenance.
Yep.
And so you could quickly say, well, that's, you know, thirty percent, thirty-three percent of the money is going to that, and that doesn't seem to jive with what's being said here. And this is where it gets confusing to understand. That's where you have to look at the whole, the zero-sum.
You do, and that's why I appreciate the question, because it would be, you would likely come to the wrong conclusion if you just read our budget. I would hope if you heard what we're saying previously, and then looked at that budget numbers, that before you got to that conclusion, you would call and ask a question. And really, I've not had one question on this until this morning from you since we made this change. And I say that because, again, I wish more people did pay attention. As you know, when we have our budget hearings, meetings, public hearing for a hundred and fifty million dollars, rarely does anybody show up. I wish the room was full, but it's not.
He takes it kind of personally, too.
I do.
Because people get up and leave before his report.
He's very passionate.
I think one thing you have to keep in mind is that, like we talked about, a zero-sum, is we get money from different sources. So we get money for the education plan from a base amount of money that we get from the state. And then we get property tax dollars for other funds. So the whole thing comes to, and school districts don't make money. You know, we're not allowed to like make money. So the collection of that money, and then every expenditure then, after we get it, has rules. And there's rules about what you can spend and how you can spend it. And that's, you know, Mr. McMichael and his team does a great job of following every single rule. I wouldn't confuse this resolution you're signing tonight with what's happened in the past, because what you're doing right now begins in 2024, moving forward. And then, of course, our state government makes decisions that they wanted things certain ways. We had to change the way we did accounting because of a decision made by the state legislature, which costs us a lot of money to put that in place. So there's rules on how it can be spent and how it can be transferred, and so that all expenses are covered and paid. And then our job is to make sure that we budget and get the correct amount of money to be able to give the type of education that our kids deserve, our families want, and our community expects. So those pieces are all, and you can't really make it simple, because it's so complex. But I would encourage anybody that has a question to contact Roger McMichael, and he can walk you through to every detail of every piece, of any piece. You send us several questions before every board meeting, and him and his team go, and they tell you what was purchased with, they know where every nickel goes. And that's the hard work and really good organization. So you can see it's a great balancing act of that zero-sum game of what we do, to make sure that we're competitive with salaries and benefits, to make sure that we have good facilities, and our facilities are kept up to a high standard, is to make sure that we're competitive in this difficult time of hiring right now, that we can draw people in and draw quality people to serve our community and our kids. And all those pieces fit together. And so really, what tonight's about is continuing that good work and moving forward, and being fiscally responsible about that.
Kristen?
I just wanted to, I'm going to attempt to summarize that in layman's terms. One of the big pieces I heard you keep repeating is that this referendum would take effect in 2024, and it's a different way of doing things that have been done in the past. So especially if people are looking at budgets and things that are available online from past years, it's going to be looked completely different in 2024. The money is very much more narrowly, we're stating exactly what it will be used for as compared to the past.
Yeah, the key is, is that, as I said, that form that breaks out about twenty-four million, that was not a part of the requirement, just the narrative. And so the narrative gave much more flexibility, still abiding by what we said in the question, but it gave much more flexibility in terms of how you could code expenses and so forth, as I previously described. And so, and we could still do that, but instead of having two lines that says basically classroom teachers and other educational programs, I could say, you know, custodians and utilities and all that. But to say, but, we won't make a transfer, I can't get all that on their simplistic form. And so it's And so, so it's, now makes more sense fiscally, not fiscally, but just operationally to, to, to just do the transfer. Like, like 250 out of 300 school, at least 250 out of 300 school districts, because they don't have a referendum fund. And, and they, they would have to transfer in order to add more money as they transferred those operational expenses that previously were in the general fund.
And rules don't make us more efficient, but they do, I think they will make it a little more transparent.
Correct.
I have just one, one more question. In, in the, the resolution, it, it talks about, kind of midway down, it says, but not to exceed 19 cents per $100 assessed valuation, starting in '24. You know, and I've, I've spoken to other taxpayers, I've looked at my own property tax document, and what I've noticed over the, the last seven years, when, from when the last resolution went in at the same rate, is the values have gone up, and the money we've collected off this has gone up 72%. So it's, it's a pretty significant increase in assessed values. So we, we are holding the rate the same, but, you know, from seven years ago, we were getting, I think, 14 and a half million, now we're getting 25 million. And, and of course, that will go up probably, hopefully, over the next eight years. Which, that has really outpaced inflation during that period of time. I think we're about 24% total in that same seven years. So we are gaining a lot more of this piece of the, the funding. It's not, I'm not saying, you know, we're getting that much more money across the board. And I know a lot of things are up very significantly in costs, like buses, you'd mentioned, are 30% up, I think, at one time. But there, so my question is this, is could you explain what it, what it means when it says not to exceed 19 cents? Like, for example, this will help my asking the question. If, let's say, all of a sudden, we're at a point where we, we have, we're collecting a lot more money than we need. And, and Dr. Beresford, you mentioned that, you know, we're not a profit organization, so we're not here to make money. We're here to educate children. So what happens if all of a sudden we realize, well, we, we didn't need to collect it 19 cents? We could have got by with 17 cents or something.
I'll answer that question, but I, I want to respond to your earlier comments. I wasn't, I don't, I'm not prepared, I hadn't looked this up in advance, as, as you looked up information. But I'm not, I'm not 100% sure if, if, if the 14 and a half million is this referendum, or if it was the one. We did raise, the current referendum was raised to 19 cents, from 16 cents. Because I, I'm not sure that, that our, this referendum has grown 70-some percent. But what has happened is, is that, that you're, the way it works is, the math of it, the way it works is correct. There's a rate times the assessed value, and as noted in the, one of the forms at the footnote, this assumes a 3% growth in assessed value. So if you have a 3% growth in assessed value, you're essentially going to get 3% more money. So Carmel, having, certainly in, in earlier years, being a growing school corporation, I would, I would assert that the increase in assessed value is reflecting inflation, which includes the value of property, not just our houses, by the way, but commercial property, which is where the big money's at, as you know. But it does reflect inflation, but it also reflects growth. And so it's important to note that if we, if inflation is 3%, but, and then you add growth to that, so that, think of it, if we have 500 more kids, then we're going to proportionately need, need more money. So we're not needing the same 25 million for the same number of kids. We also, it needs to increase, which I think the state legislators understood that. That's why they cap this with a, a rate rather than the levy, so a rate rather than dollars. Because they understood eight years would, would be affected by inflation and would be affected by growth, both of which are reflected in our assessed value. So the, the inflationary effect is your house and mine, but the growth is the new houses that are built. And so that gets added to the tax rolls, you know, as well, and needs to, or otherwise, we won't keep up, just as if our salary were frozen for the next eight years. And, and there's inflation, then, you know, we wouldn't be able, we wouldn't keep up, so we wouldn't have the same buying power. And so the same taxpayer, however, when their house goes up, and again, it's not an exact science, but their house went up, and, and for this, the dollars that they're paying goes up, but so did their salary. And, you know, again, not, oh, you can be on fixed income, and so there's always exceptions, but you get the concept. So, so, so the assessed value growth, the important part here is, is it does reflect inflation, it also reflects growth. And so I would have said, just without going back and looking, but just from being here in memory, that I know the last, you know, four or five years, I would anticipate about a 4% growth in assessed value. And as I think everybody sitting here knows, last year wasn't typical. And, and for us, that assessed value went up about 12.8%. Westfield's went up 25%. And why? Because their growth, their inflation's not particularly more than ours, I don't believe, but their growth sure is. And, and, and so, and they did what you're, you're, you're talking about. They, they, they lowered their new referendum, and if ours was 25%, I'd likely recommend we lower ours. They lowered our, theirs to about what ours is now, in terms, in terms of the 14%.
And to interrupt you, and I apologize, we have, like the safety referendum.
Yep.
We didn't need the money.
Right.
So we had it lower until we did. So it's like a, we've done it before.
Yeah, for the first three years of the safety referendum, we had a maximum levy of 5 cents. And so for the first three years, we collected 3.5?
Yes, 3 and 1/2 cents.
Because we were growing, you know, we were adding SROs to our rolls every year. We were getting that mental health services contract filled, and we knew that upfront, we wouldn't need that much money. And then as we filled out the whole unit, and we got farther into it, then, then it came necessary to take the whole, the whole amount. So we do have control, you have control, over how much we collect. So that's why, that's another reason why it says up to that maximum 0.19. It doesn't say that you can't collect less, and so.
You just, but you can't collect more.
But you can't collect more.
Yeah, that's, that's getting to the question on the, the up to. So let's say we're in 2026, we're two years into the, the referendum collecting, and we realize, you know, we've been collecting a lot more than we need. How do we turn that spigot or adjust that spigot, so maybe it's like 17 cents?
That's what, that's exactly how you adjust the spigot. You, you're, a choice would be to, as we did with safety referendum, we never, first three years, we didn't tax at the maximum. Safety referendum is 5 cents as compared to the 19 cents here, so that's the maximum. So we taxed it 3 and 1/2, because as was said earlier, we have no intent of taxing our taxpayers, even though they've approved it, we, we would not even consider taxing them for money that we otherwise don't need.
It would come back to the board for a vote.
And we don't have anything, we wouldn't have anything to do with it other than leave it in the bank if we did. So, so, so that, it's not just that, not only would we not do that out of good moral character, there'd be no purpose in doing it. And so, so we wouldn't. And so if, my hope would be that the state someday would, you know, fund schools at, at, at a better rate, and we might feel it's not as necessary to, to tax locally with, with a referendum. That's why we have it in the first place, because we did not feel that the funding from the state, when they took over the, what was then the general fund, and we proceeded, when they did, when that happened, it also, the timing was such that it was the beginning of the Great Recession, and so we went six years. Six years with actual dollars from the state not increasing, in fact, decreased. And they decreased, and it took six years before the, the actual dollars, in spite of growth, you know, in spite of, it wasn't a lot of inflation back then, but there certainly was some. And so the dollars decreased, and it didn't get back to where it was for six years. And so we essentially said, we're going to ask our community to supplement, if you will, the funding, because we, we're unable to deliver the quality education that we want to and that they expect. And that's not, that part's not changed.
One last question, I promise. It's kind of a spin-off question. So just looking back at the last referendum, the last seven-year one that was voted on in 2017.
Yes.
At, at the same rate, did we, in any of those seven years, draw less than 19 cents? Did we find that we didn't need?
No.
It's part of the, when we have our updates, the monthly updates, you're able to see the money that's coming in and the spending. And that's one of the things that as a board we monitor, to see, you know, how much money are we getting from the referendum? How much money is going out? And so those are things that as the years progress, as we're watching and we're seeing that, if it's something that we, you know, with, you know, talk with our administration, you know, we need to decrease it, whatnot, then that would come again for a vote from the board.
And I'd add, again, restate and remind people that we're talking about money that's spent for, in the classroom instructional expenses. So when we talk about reducing the rate, the only way you can do that is either pay staff less money or pay fewer. And so you're either going to have, it's going to, if it's any kind of meaningful reduction, you're either going to have higher class size, higher pupil teacher ratio, and/or you're going to pay not just teachers, but starting with, that's where, that's where the, the single majority of our staff is. You're either going to pay them less money, or you're going to pay less of them. And, and so I probably won't recommend that.
Unless our assessed value goes so crazy that we all can't.
If it, that'd be great. That would be great, because that has other impact. If the state would give us more money, that'd be great.
Just, and one last comment, talking as a taxpayer, and, and see my, our property tax go up 40% over the last three years, and, and about 75% over the last seven years. I, I would like to see us try to see if we could return some of that money, you know, just be frugal and see if we can, you know, return some of that money back to the taxpayers, rather, because it's real easy. You know, you tend to, it's like with closets, you tend to fill them up. If you've got closet space, you fill it up. If you've got money, it's, sometimes you tend to spend it. And I would just, you know, challenge us to try to look for some opportunities to make sure we're, we're returning it if we don't need it, and we're not just spending it because we have it.
Okay, I can't quite leave that go, because I, I don't want anybody to leave here thinking we're not already frugal, because we are. And, and I at least, and my staff, are rather constantly looking for ways to be more so and be efficient with the funds that we have. So I think we're already doing that. And so, but there can be difference of opinion, but as I said, any kind of meaningful reduction in revenue will result in higher pupil teacher ratio and/or lower salaries, or both, usually it's both. Because when you don't have enough money to go around, you don't usually just take it from one spot, you, you kind of spread the pain. And so you, you want to have as many staff as possible to educate children. And so you try to tighten down on the increases, or at least you know that's part of the, can be part of the equation. And ultimately, it's also become a matter of less of them. And, and I'm using teachers, because it's, it wouldn't be just teachers, but, but that is the vast majority of where we spend our educational resources.
Can I, am I, are you guys done? All right, Kristen, go ahead.
I just comment, had a comment as a parent, because I, my, when my oldest started in kindergarten, elementary, the class sizes were quite large, which is probably, was, would have been during that recession period, during that six years. And, you know, I'm talking into the 30s in each class, and that's not where we are now. And I know, I have a lot of teachers who are friends, and, and, you know, 30 is not, 30-some students is not preferred to, to make sure that differentiated instruction occurs, and the high, the high quality of education that we expect here in Carmel. So I, I see, that kind of puts it together for me as a parent, to know that that is where we were before the referendum.
That's why this is crucial. And Carmel Clay Schools will not be the same Carmel Clay Schools without this referendum. And that's why we say almost every time we talk about anything that has to do with funding, how fortunate we are, because this community has high expectations, and they want to support those expectations. And that's what makes this a special place.
Oops. Okay, so I have a couple comments, think, thoughts, and then I also, our two board members who weren't able to be here, they have a statement that they'd like me to read. My first thing is, is next month, I hit 10 years in Carmel, so I'm very excited about that. So we moved here 12 hours before the first day of school for an order to go into kindergarten. So that was super fun. So this year marks 10 years. And so that was 2013. In 2016, I had the immense honor and privilege to join the Carmel Clay School Board. And the following year in 2017, the, I had the opportunity to present the referen, the first one. So I now have this unique situation where on the board, I get to present it to the community for the second time. I could get emotional, and I won't, but I am so thankful that I, as a parent, live in a community that invests so much in our children. Not only our funds, which we're talking about tonight, but our time and our energy and our caring and our love, because, you know, as important as this money is, it's, it wouldn't happen, but it wouldn't really happen without all the people that support it. We are the lowest funded, we work diligently with our legislators to try to right-size that, whatever that looks, as liaisons and with our letters and working with our, our representatives. But tonight, what I kind of, for just a second, I want to say thank you to the people who supported us last time, that's seven years ago. You are the people who helped, you know, make all of our National Merit Scholars. You are the people who made our champion athletic, or athletic students who get that Scholar-Athlete Award. You are the ones who helped a child learn how to read, who had to pass a test, how to multiply in a different way, because they had a teacher who was trained to think outside the box and to go different ways. You helped hire an elementary school in 2017 who's just about to hit seven years at Carmel Clay Schools. So with immense gratitude, I am so thankful for all the things that you as our community have done to support us and continue to support us with asking us for tonight. So that way, and now I'm going to read something, so I don't cry in front of all of you. So Jennifer wanted me to share this with you. "I strongly support the proposed school board referendum. Thriving Carmel Clay Schools are a key component to the continued success of the city of Carmel. These referendum funds ensure that needed teacher, support, staff, and key professionals may be hired and retained. I am proud to serve as a school board member, and I urge those in our community to vote in November." Ms. Jackson. "Board and community, although I will be unable to attend Monday's meeting, I fully support the proposed referendum. I look forward to continuing to lead our community in uninterrupted support for competitive teacher pay to ensure the quality of education remains high in our Carmel schools." So we're sad that they couldn't join us, but I appreciate them giving us the opportunity to kind of state some of their statements tonight. With that, is there anything else? I would thou like to move us to take a vote. All of those in favor of adopting the renewal of the referendum for the tax levy resolution, please signify by saying aye. Motion carries 3-0. I will now take a motion to adjourn our meeting.
So moved.
Second. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you very much.